Pursuant to motion adopted on Thursday, September 18, Committee is meeting on youth employment in Canada. Today's meeting is taking place in a hybrid format pursuant to standing orders to House Commons. Members are attending in person as well as here in the room. Before I begin, I simply want to remind all members, as we do, to please turn your devices to silent mode and refrain from tapping the boom of the mic for the protection of the translators. You have the option to participate in this meeting in the official language of your choice in the room. Make sure you familiarize yourself with the interpretation and the headset so you're on the right channel to participate. Those appearing virtually, choose the globe icon on the bottom of your service, choose the official language of your choice. If there's an interruption in translation service, please get my attention in the room, raise your hand, and we'll suspend while it's corrected. If you're virtually, use the raised hand icon, and we'll suspend while it's corrected. I would like to advise before we begin that one of the witnesses did fail their, the technology test today, so we'll, in the first one, we will not be, we will only have two. Madame Gesse did not pass the sound quality test for the interpretation. All others have been approved. Please wait until, or direct all questions through either chair. Wait until I recognize you before you, before you begin your comments. And again, all comments should be addressed through either chair. So beginning this afternoon's first panel, I would like to now welcome our witnesses appearing virtually. We have Mr. Robert Henderson, President of BioTalent Canada. In the room with us is Dr. Valerie Walker, Chief Executive Officer of Business Plus Higher Education Roundtable. And as I indicated, the third witness did not pass her test. She will be, she will be scheduled at a later meeting.
Well, didn't she meet for the sound test?
She didn't have her headset.
Okay, but one was sent?
It was.
Okay, thanks.
But she is being rescheduled.
Perfect, thank you.
As, okay. So we will begin with a five-minute presentation, beginning with Mr. Henderson. Mr. Henderson, you have the floor, and when you reach five minutes, I will say thank you, at which time I would like you to conclude shortly thereafter. If you exceed five, Mr. Henderson, you have the floor for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the committee. Mais sincère, merci m'a d'avoir l'opportunité.
Thank you so much for having given me the opportunity to speak to you today.
I serve as president and CEO of BioTalent Canada. BioTalent Canada is a national nonprofit organization that works to strengthen Canada's bioscience sector by providing valuable evidence-based labor market information and the best job-ready human resources available. We are one of several 14 or 15 sectoral, national sectoral associations across Canada. Our role is to connect employers with skilled people, and just as importantly, to connect students and new graduates with their first meaningful work experiences. Much of that work happens through the Student Work Placement Program, or what we call SWIP, which BioTalent Canada has proudly helped deliver since 2017 as one of the inaugural service providers. Let me start with the challenge this committee is studying, and that's youth employment. We know that while the overall labor market remains tight, our young people are being hit the hardest. Over the past year, youth unemployment has risen faster than any other demographic. And at the same time, employers are reporting record difficulty filling entry-level roles, particularly in technical and science-based fields. That disconnect is widening. Students are graduating without the work experiences employers expect, while employers hesitate to hire workers who lack that experience, a cycle that leaves both sides frustrated. The situation is even more acute for underrepresented youth. Without targeted support, these groups risk being permanently excluded from high-growth industries that urgently need their skills. In short, the problem of youth unemployment is getting worse, and if we don't address it, we risk losing the next generation of innovators, entrepreneurs, and skilled workers that Canada needs to compete. The Student Work Placement Program, or SWIP, is an important part of that solution. SWIP helps employers create paid, career-relevant placements for students, students before they graduate, giving young people experience, income, and confidence, while giving businesses access to the talent they need to innovate and grow. The government's investment in SWIP and in the broader network of sectoral academic partnerships that deliver it has also fostered innovation and proven itself as a conduit for national and industry industrial economic recovery. During COVID-19, these partnerships helped sustain key industries and connect employers with urgently needed talent. That same infrastructure can serve as the delivery mechanism for future talent pipelines and targeted economic investments aligned with national priorities. Since 2017, BioTalent Canada alone as an association has facilitated over 16,000 student placements across every province and territory. To understand the impact, there are only 200,000 people that we have census, have made a census, are employed in Canada's bioeconomy, so that represents 8% of the entire employment capacity of Canada's biotech industry. Nationally, there are 17 delivery partners doing similar work in other sectors, from digital technology to manufacturing to finance. For the majority of employers participating, about 70% are small and medium-sized enterprises, and these are the drivers, as we all know, the huge growth opportunities of employment now and in the future. But without, without that, those placements would simply not exist without SWIP. The results of SWIP are measurable and consistent. SWIP and the Innovative Work Integrated Learning Program have been incredibly effective at delivering student placements because they're deeply connected to Canada's small and medium-sized businesses. These programs have allowed for the creation of longstanding relationships with tens of thousands of employers, which is why satisfaction is so high. In fact, 98% of employers report being satisfied with the SWIP program. One-third of employers say the position would not even exist without the program, and another 6% expanded their hiring because of it. Beyond the numbers, the program delivers what governments often seek but rarely achieve: immediate, scalable impact. The benefits ripple well beyond individual placements. By linking post-secondary institutions with industry, SWIP helps align our education with labor market needs directly. It exposes employers to the next generation of talent and gives students a pathway to permanent work. Many go on to be hired full-time after their placements end. In communities across the country, it builds local capacity, keeps young Canadians in their regions, and strengthens our innovation ecosystem. The risk of letting the program, SWIP, lapse is significant. The infrastructure that makes it effective, like employer networks, post-secondary partnerships, and digital systems, cannot be turned on and off without serious cost. If support is interrupted, students lose opportunities, employers lose confidence, and the country loses momentum in closing the youth employment gap. Mr. Chair, members, the government has committed to double down on what works in youth employment and skills development. SWIP has proven in almost every network that it is what works. It's cost-effective, measurable, and directly tied to job creation. It ensures that young Canadians are ready for the workforce and that the workforce is ready for them. Making the Student Work Placement Program a permanent and predictably funded part and the, and the foundation of Canada's youth employment strategy would not only help thousands, thousands more young people launch their careers, but it would strengthen Canada's resilience, productivity, and competitiveness for the long term. So I thank you for your attention to this matter, and I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, and now Dr. Walker for five minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, honorable members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Val Walker, and I'm the CEO at the Business and Higher Education Roundtable, or BEHER. We're the only organization in Canada that brings together leaders from countries' top companies and post-secondary institutions to work on critical issues together to create a better social and economic future. As Canada's leading cross-sector convener and driver of change, we collaborate with our members to tackle some of the country's biggest skills, talent, innovation, and productivity challenges. Since 2019, we've played a critical role in helping post-secondary institutions and businesses create work experiences for students before they finish school. With federal support starting in 2019, we at BEHER and our funded partners have created more than 70,000 work-integrated learning opportunities for students. We've created more than 100 partnerships and built an employer network of nearly 12,000 companies across the country, so we know what works on the ground. Today, we're here to talk about the challenges young people are facing when it comes to accessing employment. Behind the current crisis-level numbers are young people doing a lot of things right. They're earning credentials, they're gaining skills, and they're working hard to find work. But they're still struggling for that first and lasting foothold in the labor market. At the same time, we know for certain that employers need talent, especially in big fields like AI, healthcare, the skilled trades, and the energy sector, to name only a few. At BEHER, we know that connecting young people to employers early, getting them experience and expose them not just to work, but how work works, is the most effective way to create career pathways for young people and to build the skilled talent pipelines that enable Canada's businesses to be productive, innovative, and grow. I'll focus here on three practical actions to turn this around, our current challenge with youth unemployment, and widen the on-ramps to work for every young person in Canada. Number one: help youth name and prove their skills. Give young people simple tools to identify and describe what they can do. For example, at post-secondary institutions, every course or program should include plain-language skills statements, so learners can point to the exact skills they have rather than vague course titles. Well-designed micro-credentials do this already. Our friends and collaborators at E-Campus Ontario are leading the charge on this in Ontario and on behalf of the federal government by connecting users of Canada's Job Bank to micro-credentials at accredited public post-secondary institutions. On the employer side of things, they should focus job postings on skills, not just credentials or job titles. That helps young people see themselves in the job and show their value faster, and it helps employers spot talent sooner. Number two: guide youth to where there's the biggest demand for jobs. Targeted workforce development means clear, guided pathways to real jobs. Young people need to see a six- or 12-month opportunity map by region and sector, including openings, wages, and skills. Then we can distribute those maps through schools, post-secondary institutions, and job platforms, so youth can see where work is growing and where opportunities are. On the post-secondary side, they can convert those signals into two-to-three-step routes from a micro-credential to a small or short work placement to an entry-level job. Employers should be working and co-creating these programs and paid experiences with postsecondaries tied specifically to vacancies, demand, and growth. They should also be investing in supervisor training, flexible schedules, and sharing quarterly demand data, ideally through organizations like ours. Number three, and more importantly, make work-integrated learning the default on-ramp to jobs. Will is more than just co-ops and internships, it's short projects, microconsulting, hackathons, case competitions. But it can also be improved employee onboarding or on-the-job upskilling. This is critical. Through will, young people learn how to, how work works, employers get early access to talent, and in our programs, 2/3 of employers report productivity gains as a result of their student. The challenge is, like my fellow witness has said, that there's not enough access to will yet, and so how do we solve for this? We need more flexible programming within our post-secondary institutions. This means more short-cycle work experiences and, where possible, flipping the balance between in-class and on-the-job training. Apprenticeship-style learning can't just be for the skilled trades anymore. Maybe most importantly, to reach the goal of giving every student work experience before they graduate so they can be secure in that first job, Canada needs the largest employers at the table, the kinds of companies that BEHER works with. The challenge here is that these companies come for scale and simplicity, and they don't come for wage subsidies. In closing, what we're looking at is partnership and capacity building between postsecondaries and industry. Bottom line is that when businesses and postsecondaries partner, we create more opportunities for young people, and our productivity rises. That's what we were built to do, that's what we're here to help you do, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. We'll now begin the first six-minute round with Mr. Janus for six minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to both the witnesses, and I'll probably bob back and forth between the two of you. To start with, would, would both of you agree that we are currently in a youth jobs crisis? Is that a, an accurate way of describing the challenge in front of us?
I can start the conversation, the response if you'd like. At the time, certainly all numbers point towards that.
Okay, thank you.
That's, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Walker? I'll come back to you later, but I'm just trying to get as many as I can. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's a big challenge for sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Walker, I was intrigued by your comments about guiding youth to where the jobs are. And I've talked to a lot of employers in my time in, in this role as our Shadow Minister for Employment. Some of them complain a bit about guidance counselors. Their perception is that students are maybe steered in, in some directions that aren't reflective of the skills that are required by the labor market. And I, I wonder, and I'm sure, I'm sure everybody in that profession is doing the best they can, but I, how do you see us being able to push more information about the immediate needs of the labor market, basically to people as young as possible, so that they have that information and they're ready to use it?
It's a great question. I'll be clear, I don't mean guide, I wasn't speaking about guidance counselors. I was looking specifically at ways to target real-time labor market information to the students or youth who are looking for where industry is growing the most. I would argue it is actually through organizations like Robs and others, who are the ones directly connecting with employers, to get that real-time data and not necessarily looking to StatsCan or other groups who are looking backwards and collecting labor market statistics and data that, by the time they're published, are already out of date.
Yeah, thank you. And I was going to ask this question to, to our other witness who wasn't able to be here, and I'll, I'll pose it later, but I'll ask you as well, just in terms of labor market information getting to young people. I met with a group of, of young people this morning who were talking about how sometimes in immigrant communities, the information that, or the expectation that parents have is that university is the, is the best path. And I wonder if you think there are ways that we can get more information, even as part of settlement services, as part of, of welcoming people to Canada, to see that, you know, we do have colleges, there are trades opportunities, there's a broad range of different opportunities that people could consider that would provide them with good opportunities as well?
Yeah, I agree with that. One, one example I can give you is an organization, it's one of our members called Passage, and they have data looking at who actually comes here from other countries to study international, I'm not the international student issue, but the primary group are those who are in their home country pretty well off in order to meet the minimum requirements these days. And we are missing, those folks who come here, the family has rallied around them to send them to Canada for school, are less likely coming in to be interested in those careers, often because in their home country, the conditions or the amount of money one can make in a career like that is significantly limited. And so broadening, in part, the types of people who can come to Canada and providing the microloans or what they need to get a foothold will be one way, I think, purposely of increasing those who are interested in the skilled trades.
Okay. Mr. Henderson, the program you're talking about, SWIP, it's a, it's a wage subsidy program, correct?
Wage subsidies are only part of the employer supports that are given through the Student Work Placement Program. Many of the delivery agents, like my own, offer training as well in company, as well as things like, because many of these organizations, SMEs, don't have dedicated HR support, we also give them support in, in instituting mentorship programs, things like DEI policies, et cetera.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm going to try to get a couple, a couple quick questions in before the time runs up.
Sure.
So for the wage subsidy component, what, what percentage of the wage is subsidized, and for how long of a period?
It's no more than, absolutely, it's no more than 50%. It depends whether the student is a first-year student or an equity-deserving group, and it can go up to $7,000, $5,000 to $7,000 for a 16-week period.
Okay, perfect. And if you want to, if you want to follow up with, with more detailed information, if I'm not giving you enough time, you can always provide that in, in writing. Thank you. I know we've got to, we've got to stick within the parameters, but one of the, one of the questions that I've heard about wage subsidy programs is, is the, the continuation piece. So the, the goal is to give young people an opportunity to, to start in a job where they're going to be able to continue in that field and use that experience. But there, there are instances where the, the company and the individual benefit from the wage subsidy, but then they stop working there once the wage subsidy ends. And do you have, do you have data on what proportion of people are able to continue after, after the, the time of the program ends? And what advice would you give the committee on the structure of wage subsidy programs leading to permanence as opposed to kind of ending, the, the job ending when the subsidy ends?
Sure. Biotech companies are looking for that swan, which is between three to five years. They can't find them because there's just not enough of them, so they have to create them. The Student Work Placement Program is now with a 98% satisfaction rate. 1/3 of employers said they wouldn't even have been able to create the job without the, the employer supports, including the wage subsidy as part of that. So that's a very key component in terms of that. They simply, because they don't have any, any human resource, 70% of them have no human resource expertise, the wage subsidy alleviates the biggest pain that they've got, and that's onboarding and training a brand-new green employee within the industry. So the, and, and this would simply not happen, let alone the collections, the connections that my fellow witness was also talking about, which is the connections between academia, which is the source of the talent. So that has been, has been incredibly important. From our employers, more than 50% of the positions have continued after the subsidy ends.
To Mr. Janus and Ms. Fancy for six minutes.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Henderson and Dr. Val, for coming today. I'd like to begin by welcoming everybody and to say your thank you, as well as our colleague, Ms. Royer, for being able to tune in with us today as well. As a mom of a teenager and a former educator, and as a new member of parliament, I've spent a lot of time talking with youth over the last two decades, and especially within my riding of South Shore St. Margaret's and in talking about some of the struggles that youth are facing, whether it's finding that first-time job, or securing stable hours, or accessing, being able to access the right training for them and supports to help build a meaningful career. So I'm going to kind of tag team between Mr. Henderson and Dr. Walker today. And my first question that I have is for Dr. Walker, and it's regarding, with you being at the forefront of connecting with employers and post-secondary institutions to create more work integration and learning opportunities. So based on your experience, Dr. Val, what are some of the most effective ways that we can expand these types of partnerships, and particularly in smaller rural areas, so that all Canadians have an equitable access to building a career?
Thank you very much for the question, and I like Dr. Val, that, that can be just Val, but that's great. Look, we've also talked to people all across the country, youth and educators and employers, and despite what we hear every time, our region is unique, it's different than everywhere else in Canada, we need a customized solution for this place. It turns out, we see about 80% of the needs, whether it's to help with the mentoring of a student, to help the training of an HR or of a, a manager, are consistent. And there's an opportunity, and this is what we do with money from the federal government, is to build the capacity, the tools and resources, the 80% that is generally common across the country for those folks in rural Canada, as well as those in big urban centers, and then work with those people to help them customize for their particular need, whether it's a certain industry, a certain region in a country, a certain student demographic, that last 20%. And they're the huge opportunity to get a gain in scale through, through programs like that.
Nice. Thank you so much, doctor, for your kind of rural-centric lens and being able to regionalize different programs and services. My second question today is for Mr. Henderson, and I'm so glad you spoke today about the importance of partnerships, like your fellow colleagues speaking with us today, between government and employers and educational institutions to address some of these skill gaps. My question is, from your perspective, how can we strengthen these partnerships to ensure that youth across Canada, and, and including, once again, those in rural, smaller communities, have access to the same high-quality training and employment opportunities in these fast-growing sectors?
I think the Student Work Placement Program has shown itself to be an effective delivery method for work-integrated learning and connecting students to employers. I think now it can go into a next stage of evolution, where, as Dr. Walker was saying, there are things like micro-credentialing and other ways of identifying the skills, practical skills competencies that students require. So there could be more criteria attributed to work-integrated learning programs and student work placement programs to encourage SMEs, small and medium-sized enterprises, to adopt innovative training around artificial intelligence and other means that are going to be absolutely critical, and like Dr. Walker said, 80% common. Artificial intelligence is industry-agnostic. Every single industry is going to have to adopt it in the future. The Student Work Placement Program can be, could be an exceptionally already successful delivery mechanism for some government priorities around training, around micro-credentialing, around skills delivery, around practical skills that sometimes evade post-secondary institutions, because, as we all know, our country's second to none in the delivery of, of academic training. But sometimes practical business training is more challenging to them, and a program that already has a work-integrated learning, integrated into it, is a perfect delivery mechanism for those skills and priorities that the government wants, needs to inculcate in our young people.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Henderson. And a follow-up question as well, Dr. Walker. You've spoken about the importance of collaboration across all of these sectors to prepare youth for some of the rapidly changing economy, let's put it at that. From your perspective, what more can we, as a federal government, do to help encourage stronger engagement from both private and public sectors, as well as through nonprofit organizations, to help address these skills, skill gaps in supporting youth in their transition to meaningful work?
It sounds really easy, but the answer is more dialogue between the two, between employers and educators. We are in the midst of a year-long initiative, looking at what post-secondary reform could be in this country to set us up that postsecondaries by 2035 are active contributors to Canada's GDP and not drawers upon GDP. There's a need right now to talk amongst each other, not just talk, but make it possible then, and sometimes this is a provincial-level issue, to create the incentives, the levers for leaders within the post-secondary systems to update and change their means of teaching and learning to allow more connectivity, more fluidity between school and work earlier in a student's career or a degree or diploma and throughout one's career. It's a lot of work, but that has to start with the dialogue.
Yes. Oh.
Over a bit. Madame Gill, pour six minutes.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Alors, merci à Monsieur.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Henderson and Dr. Walker, for their testimony. So you both have organizations that make a link between workers and students who would like to be on the job market. What do you, are you observing mainly with young people? Because one finishes one's studies and then one can find work, go, go on the labor market. Now, what, why do students not find work mainly? And how is it, why do employers, how are they not able to recruit? So I'd like to know, what's that link that you're making in different ways in both organizations? Dr. Walker, please.
For the question, there are several things I think matter. I will speak to one in the interest of time. I think there is a huge opportunity to help students articulate the skills they have and make it easier for them to draw connection to the job an employer is looking to fill. I can give you an example in my own life. I have a PhD in heart physiology. That does not matter to my job, that did not matter to any of my jobs, but what did with my resilience, problem-solving, critical thinking, all of those skills. You need to learn how to talk about what skills you have and not just the stuff you know. And there's a big, big opportunity, I think, for them on the student side to make that connection quicker and easier.
Donc, à fait, est-ce que vous pensez? So is that what you're doing yourself? I'll come to Mr. I'll come to Mr. Henderson, too. But is that what you're doing? Because you talk about syllabuses, syllabi. I also taught in higher education, so we talk about skills and say, know what they're going to learn and of what use that will be to them. So it's not just knowledge, but it's knowing how to do things. So I don't like talking about educational institutions, it's under provincial jurisdiction, the provinces, but that's what's missing. So their understanding of what they're able to do. So, and what is it for employers? What's the block, the obstacle?
Question, my answer to that in terms of specifically the potential federal role, again, is, and we're in early stages of doing this ourselves, is to create a micro-credential specifically for work-integrated learning. We know students with will have more of those connections to the workplace, but if you could create a digital badge or a micro-credential that very specifically outlined the knowledge, skills and competencies that a student gains as a result of that will, and then let them put it on their LinkedIn profile, or their CV, or resume, so that they can clearly know what that is and talk about it with the employer, I'm quite confident that is a specific example of how we could make that transition from school to work a lot smoother for our youth.
And you think that that's one of the reasons that explains particularly high unemployment with, for young students?
Ability to make those connections is part of the problem. I wouldn't clarify, I wouldn't classify it as the primary reason. Yeah.
Thank you very much, and maybe the same questions to Mr. Henderson for the time that we still have left. Thank you.
The, as my colleague mentioned, especially where the small and medium-sized enterprises which hire the most amount of students, more than 50, our research has indicated more than 50% don't use social media, job boards, or anything in order to recruit these students. They simply call some of their peers who don't, who are also not connected. So work-integrated learning allows a connection through academia of the student directly to employers, who would never know that that talent exists. Now, back to what we were talking about before, in terms of when we call them the soft skills, or we would say success skills, the federal government has funded, there is no better way to inculcate those skills than through practical application of them in business. And that is simply what the skills that are most valuable. Our labour market research says that those soft skills, things like what we are doing today, presentation skills, you can't learn that in a book, you have to do it, right? In terms of being able to do that, and you can only do that on the job. So we're finding those soft skills are even more valuable in my vertical in biotechnology, which is one of the highest-educated verticals in the world. Those soft skills are absolutely critical for small and medium-sized enterprises that have so few employees, that they're doing way more than just what their job title and their job description entails. And the work, the Student Work Placement Programme is allowed to not only give the connection for employers that didn't know this job market even existed, but immediately get them those soft skills that are really, really challenging for colleges and universities to inculcate.
Maybe, just quickly, Chair. So your work creates a bridge between employers and students, but it means that there's something lacking in the side of the employers and something lacking in terms of educational institutions, so that bridge does not, is not created. So we hope that universities that respond to the labour market needs and employers should also go towards the universities, and I'm wondering if there's something missing there. I'm not saying that you're not, that it's not the fact that you're not doing it, but this is what you're telling us now.
A short answer, Mr. Henderson.
Sure. Yes, I think that is exactly it, which is why we are so passionate about work-integrated learning, because the universities, and even in the funding model, the university's job is to get them an education, not necessarily get them a job. And the employers are looking towards this programme and those bridges that we provide to bridge that gulf between what academia provides and what the employers need.
Thank you. Merci, Madame Gill. Mr. Reynolds, for five minutes, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the witnesses for coming in today. My first question is for Mr. Henderson. There's a lot of talk about micro-credentiaing. Can you explain that?
Sure. Micro-credentiaing is essentially sort of like a micro-skills certification, that some of these words meld into the other, that is a combination of a practical application and measurable application of a skill combined with an academic credential. Those two, and sometimes they're very, very specific. In my, in my industry, for example, the difference between manufacturing and bio-manufacturing is essentially a skill called good manufacturing practices. But that's a very practical application of it. It can't only be taught theoretically, it has to be shown within a laboratory setting. So there's been many, not only academic institutions, but many private-sector companies that are looking to apply a micro-credential that allows to say you have enough education, because there is an educational component that's required to it, combined with a practical application and measurability of that skill, to say you have a micro-credential in, for example, good manufacturing practices. This is a bridge between what the previous committee member was mentioning, where academia, where does academia credentialing end and the practical application begin? Because just because somebody has a BSc in biology or in biochemistry does not necessarily mean they're ready to work in a lab in bio-processing or in a position of bio-manufacturing. And that's where these micro-credentials that are so specific as technology advances become a really great opportunity for the country, for those companies that require not a broad array of skills, but sometimes very specific skills, but they're so critical to their success.
So essentially, like a trades apprenticeship, where you have a combination of academic and hands-on type of training?
Sure, but probably, but much more focused on the type of skills that employers require. And that is really what has been lacking and the gap that I think academic institutions and organizations like ourselves are trying to fill.
Okay, well, thank you. My next question is for Dr. Walker. What industry sectors do you see have the biggest demand for jobs that just aren't being filled?
Thank you for the question. I will state, I'm not a labour market economist, but what we-
In your experience, of course.
Yeah, so right now, we just hosted a meeting, actually, with leading CEOs, and we brought them together around three key industry sectors. One was AI, of course, not a big surprise. Two was energy, the energy sector, both renewables, clean energy, as well as our traditional energy, and the third was the defence sector and space. So those, right now, were three very recent examples, all of whom CEOs from all three of those industry groups talked about the need to, in some cases, really drastically increase the number of people working in those sectors.
Okay. When you talk about the defence sector, are you talking, say, manufacturing of defence equipment, or are you talking about people signing up for the military?
In this meeting, it was both.
Oh, it was both? Okay. In our current job market, are there a lot of jobs available? I mean, we're talking about youth unemployment, is it jobs that people don't want, or is it just that there aren't a lot of jobs, or jobs that they're not trained for, or?
That is the question. It, people without jobs and jobs, there are significant numbers of job vacancies right now, today, and at the same time, high levels of youth and general unemployment. And so then you, the nuance and the regional breakdown, the industry breakdown, the skills, qualifications for people, very quickly complicates the question as to why those jobs can't be filled with people who are looking for jobs while they need them.
Are there lots available, would you say?
Jobs, yes.
Jobs, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do you think that post-secondary institutions are in tune with the modern job market?
I will not paint all post-secondary institutions with the same brush, but one of the reasons we have initiated this transformation in higher ed initiative is because there's definitely opportunity for them to be more in tune with employer needs, the needs of their students, and the labour market at large.
Would you say that that's something that's, would be industry-driven, or do you think that's something that would be government-driven?
I would argue it needs to be industry-driven. I would suggest, both provincially and federally, there is a role for governments in terms of providing incentives in certain places to drive certain behaviours, but the drive itself for where employees are needed the most and where there's the greatest potential for earnings or economic growth has to come from industry.
Okay. And, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Madame De Roche, pour cinq minutes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to our witnesses for coming to be with us today.
That we are actually focusing on youth unemployment and what is at the root of it. So I think it's a very constructive conversation, so thank you for this. And so maybe I'll start with Mrs. Walker. How much of, just wanted you to expand a little bit, like how much of this gap that we've been talking about between talent and opportunities, how much of that, I'm not expecting a scientific answer from you, but you think is at the root of youth unemployment versus general unemployment?
I think there's three buckets. I think there's that ability for students to transition from school into work, there's general unemployment, and then there are youth not in education or employment, right? The so-called neat youth, and the student needs are high, of course, they have, we talk about the wilderness time, the time between graduating and getting that first job, that's lost productivity. It's equally true, though, for those not coming through traditional post-secondary, there needs to be the same types of incentives or supports for them to get those jobs. I think at that, in those, for those individuals, it would happen at an earlier stage, whether that's in high school or through some other community organization that provides that opportunity. So it's part, but certainly not the whole thing.
Thank you, and maybe I'd like to hear from Mr. Henderson on the same question.
Certainly, thank you for the question. Our labour market research indicates that the biggest demand amongst employers is the lack of talent with the available skills. So during COVID and post-COVID, the need for the access to capital, which is just as money to hire, has usually outweighed the lack of available talent and skills. COVID flipped that on its ear, where soon afterwards, they were saying, now it's just the lack of people with the skills that they require, which is why some of the programs that we were talking, which bridged that gap between post-secondary and employers, are so critical.
And maybe if I can continue with you for a minute, like, what are some of the features, you think, of the current programme that are helping bridge that gap? And then how do we scale it? Because you talked about some pretty good successes, and like, so how do we make that, how do we scale that? Do we bring more employers? And I know Ms. Walker referred to bigger employers earlier, and some of the navigating, I think, some of the bureaucracy and the systems around that, but maybe we can start with you and go to Ms. Walker.
Sure. Almost universally, and I'm not only speaking for the biotech sector, but almost universally, the Student Work Placement Programme runs out of placements every year. In other words, demand has far exceeded supply, and that wasn't during, just during COVID, that's ever been since. Small and medium-sized enterprises really like the programme because it alleviates the pain of really onboarding the only available talent that they have, which is students, right? To try to groom them to become the future employees, because the experienced employees simply aren't available to them, or there's just too much, too much competition for it. Now, the scalability of the programme-
If I can just follow up, just before, sorry to interrupt you, but I just want to, because I'm going back to something you said earlier about 50%, I think, of employers keep. So the programs are successful, in your opinion, not because necessarily the wage subsidy that is offered, but because it's bridging the gap?
Right, but because, because the access to capital follows, for small and medium-sized enterprises, closely behind the access to talent, it fills two fundamental needs. It alleviates the pain for onboarding, but more importantly, it connects them through the academic institutions to the most available source of talent that they, that they need. And to your, if I can go on to your question about scalability, or if that's okay, or no?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, quickly, because I'd like to hear Ms. Walker as well.
Sure.
Maybe 20 seconds.
Because like myself, there are sectoral associations that provide the program, so the scalability can be very much where, if the government's priority is among some of the things like agriculture, aviation, manufacturing, sectors that have been hit by tariffs, the Student Work Placement Programme can be, and has shown this during COVID, can be a highly-effective delivery mechanism for economic stimulus.
Thank you so much, Ms. Walker. We can go back to it after.
I would just say that from the large employers, like I said off the top, they are not, they need to be at the table, they hire a tonne of students, they are not in a position to want, or frankly, should have, public subsidies to offset the cost of students, student costs for wages for, even a lot of small and medium-sized companies aren't prohibitive. I agree with Rob that there are other supports needed, but looking at scale, like we, like I said, I'll just say, we did 70,000 wills, we do not provide subsidies to the employers, the employers pay the students themselves, our money goes to the institutions.
Thank you. Merci, Madame De Roche. Madame Gill, pour deux minutes.
Thank you, Ms. De Roche, Ms. Gill, for two and a half minutes. Thank you, Chair. I was asking myself, I'm wondering if it's more a problem in the science sector. I was thinking about Quebec, that's what I know, the education system is a bit different. Where we have college, we have technical diplomas from colleges, also professional studies, diplomas from colleges, and in most universities, there are internships everywhere, and not always at the end of the studies, everyone has been able to get to know an employer, and then they'll stay with the employer, we can see that quite often. And, Mr. Henderson, you talked about AI, you talked about the defence area, and is that really where we need more of a need to make a bridge between the employer and the students?
In those sectors, you mean, is that where? I would argue every sector. Every sector needs it. I would say, in addition to the student-to-employer, it's the employer and the educator, so that connection can also happen as well, and that would be equally beneficial, no matter what industry sector we're talking about.
And if I could supplement with the Quebec question?
I didn't understand the, but the educator, so it has to be a link between the employer and the young person, but you're saying the educator as well? Because for us, too, in our internships, there are people who supervise them, who will be in connection with businesses, so that's already in place. So I'm wondering if it's more in the scientific field, when you talked about biotechnology, for example, but you're saying that it's probably everywhere, maybe more in the rest of Canada? I'm wondering.
Traditionally, work-integrated learning has been focused in the STEM discipline, science, technology, engineering, math. We have data, as do others, that every field of study, students benefit from connections to employers, no matter what, whether that's social science and humanities or the sciences. So it is critical for the educator to be a part of that, so that they can adapt their curricula and their training to align with the needs of the employers.
Should I say Ms. Anderson?
Sure, and I couldn't agree more. The other thing we have to remember is that these are businesses. One of the biggest gaps and the biggest needs our labour market research has indicated are things in marketing, needs in marketing, sales, finance, these are all industry-agnostic professions, all highly educated. So I think we have to be careful, because we have to understand that in biotechnology, we don't only do science, we have to commercialize, and that requires sales, marketing, business development, et cetera, and as Dr. Walker mentioned, these are required in every sector, as we're going on, we find them.
Merci, Madame Gill.
Thank you, Ms. Gill.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you to both of the witnesses for being here today. My questions at the moment will be directed to Dr. Walker. So this committee has studied the Accessible Canada Act, which has the stated goal of creating a barrier-free Canada by 2040, and in the previous parliament, it also examined the progress that was made on this front. So we had heard repeatedly in this study that significant barriers persist. Given your organization's stated goal of promoting accessibility, but also from what we've heard thus far in this, in this current study, of the dignity of a person, so this assists with a sense of purpose, this, you know, having someone or something, like a workplace- This, you know, having someone or something like a workplace that needs that person, that employee, and having that employee contribute not only to the workplace, but also to coworkers, and also to that sense of self, sense of purpose, sense of dignity. From your perspective, what are the main barriers that Canadians with disabilities face when trying to enter or remain in the workforce?
Thank you for the question. I, we're doing a study looking at exactly that, actually, right now, funded by ESDC through their Skills for Success Program. We're looking specifically at the barriers for employers to hire students with disabilities. And a lot of the findings apply, of course, equally to persons with disabilities. To answer that fundamental question, students with disabilities graduate on par with students across Canada, and yet their employment rate drops significantly in terms of, relative to the population. So in our early explorations, and in order to make sure that employers are in line with that new legislation in federally regulated industries, we've identified several barriers that employers have at all stages of that onboarding procedure, from how they look to recruit people into the workplace, how they interview, how they onboard, and then how they develop those people while, once they're in the workplace. And the way we're looking at breaking that down is to identify particular interventions at each step. I come back to the skills articulation piece in terms of the early stages. Helping students with disabilities understand those social, emotional skills, the resilience, the problem solving that they've gone through because they are a student with a disability in and of itself. If they know how to talk about that and articulate their value and their perseverance, sometimes helps employers understand the benefits and the immense value that persons with disabilities bring to the workplace.
And I do take note, too, in your opening remarks, you know, helping, helping youth identify or name their skills. So I think plain language is something that society definitely is missing out on. I think it's better for everybody, right? It's easier to understand, it's easier to navigate. You aren't making assumptions, which we all know what that means when we're assuming something. And it just makes the whole process easier. So when will that study be completed? And is there an ability for us to be able to access that information?
Yeah, absolutely. We have an interim report that is due by March of this year, although we'll have early findings before that. The full study will conclude in March of 2027, but we have interim reports coming out in the meantime. We'd be happy to share them with this committee.
For sure. So you had, you had mentioned that your study so far has identified barriers that employers have with maybe retaining or hiring people that have disabilities. Have your, has your study come across any examples of successful initiatives or best practices that have helped reduce barriers?
Yes, and primarily those exist right now in the large companies. They're the ones with the internal resources to work on some of these things. One is to, it sounds easy again, but it's not, to do awareness raising within the company itself, especially about the different types of disabilities, right? People might be more familiar with working with someone or accommodating someone with a physical injury that was had on the job versus a congenital or sometimes hidden disability. And the HR teams often aren't connected to the actual managers and making it easier for them to share and talk and discuss instead of trying to solve each problem in a silo.
And I think, too, what we heard during that study was just invisible disabilities as well, right? Like, I think there's this assumption that people have is you need a wheelchair, or you need a walker, or you can't, you can't, you're immobile, where actually there's invisible disabilities that people may not even know somebody has a disability. So I think that awareness is key.
If I could add one thing, it's a perceived stigma still on the part of the persons, people with disabilities, and worry about disclosing. Sometimes they can't get the accommodation they need because they're afraid by disclosing it might cause some kind of negative consequence. And so that, again, is a, I'll say culture shift, that's a very hard thing to do in practice, but to break that down and start to make, make it easier for them to disclose.
For sure. Thank you very much.
Monsieur Joseph, Monsieur Joseph, for.
Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Thank, I have a question for Dr. Walker. Thank you, Dr. Walker, for being here. We know that the young people who learn in unpaid work internships and that the tasks that they're doing in the work are not really often for, to reach educational objectives. Employers who don't trust the young people, employers who are asking for years of experience unrealistically. These are problems which our young people face. What mechanisms have helped your organization to guarantee that federal investments do lead to quantifiable results in terms of youth employment, Dr. Walker?
Funded through Innovation Science and Economic Development, currently requires us to create to be eligible. It needs to either provide a paid placement in the private sector, or it needs to be clearly associated with a course credit. So we ensure as a requirement, and we put these requirements into our master funding agreements with any partner, that they must have one or the other. So we don't fund anything that we can't guarantee to the government and to our funder is being paid by the employer. Our money, like I said, doesn't go to pay the wages of the student, or that that placement is a quality placement directly related to a credential or a program completion for the student as part of their academic journey.
And I have another question. How is federal support an essential factor of collaboration between employers and educational institutions?
Things like, create the resources and tools that make that, we can help bring them together, and then we need to be able to give them the tools that they need in order to work better together. It's very, collaboration is a word that's used a lot these days. In order to create the circumstances for real, genuine, material collaboration to lead to a new program, students getting jobs, there is a public investment that, well-placed, can actually lead to quality placements as a result. It's not always a huge amount of money, but that convening power that the government has is huge.
Thank, Dr. Walker. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Henderson a question. Mr. Henderson, how do you explain the fact that despite the government investments and the numerous initiatives to favor youth employment, a large party of them, and especially those from underprivileged backgrounds, continue to have difficulties with becoming professional? What are the measures taken place, taken by these organizations to combat these inequities?
Sure.
Thank you for the question.
About eight or 10 years ago, the only mechanism that we did was for under, for equity-deserving groups, was they got a higher amount of wage subsidy or an employer support to do that. That mechanism hasn't changed for the last eight years, nor has the definition of an equity-deserving group changed. So there are some groups that we don't even measure, such as LGBTQ+, et cetera. They weren't covered in that original agreement, and that agreement has only been extended, as it is identically, for the next eight years. I believe that you have, through the Work-Integrated Learning Program, the Student Work Placement Program, an ability to evolve what, not only the definition of what we think is an equity-deserving group, but what our expectations are for a successful work-integrated learning placement. Beyond the fact that, as we mentioned before, all of our subsidies are as well, paid subsidies, there is simply an incentive to hire, not a requirement, to hire a certain proportion of equity-deserving students, such as Canadians with disabilities, Indigenous newcomers, et cetera. That condition could be added and could be better tracked to the program as it goes forward. Because now the thousands of employers that are already familiar with the program are expecting the program to evolve. They're actually surprised that it is not over the last eight or nine, eight or nine years, with the exception of scale. So I think there's a great opportunity here to make, raise the expectations on the average employer in terms of the use of diversity and inclusion policies, mentorship programs, onboarding that includes cultural awareness and buddy systems, so that not only new students, but underprivileged or equity-deserving groups get more attention.
Merci, Monsieur Joseph. That concludes the first hour. We'll thank you to the witness. We'll suspend for a couple of moments while we onboard the witnesses for the last hour. Places, we will begin, we'll begin the second hour of witness testimony on this study. So I would like to welcome the witnesses that are with us in the room and those appearing virtually. Just a reminder, you participate in the official language of your choice. Make sure you have your headset on the right channel, those appearing virtually. Use the click on the globe icon on the bottom, choose the language of your choice to participate. Please direct all questions to myself, the Chair, and wait until I recognize you to speak. So I would like to welcome, as an individual in the room, Mr. Richard Diaz. No, oh, sorry, virtually, Global Macro Strategist, and Ms. Delaney Krieger, Build a Dream to Empower Women, Senior Manager. Welcome in the room, Career Services. And from the Canadian Alliance of Student Associations, who we want to hear from. Mr. Abdul Abassi, Chair of the Board of Directors, and Ms. Wazima, Juma? Juma? Juma, Executive Directors. So each of you will have a five-minute opening statement. We'll begin with Mr. Diaz for five minutes or less. Mr. Diaz, you can begin.
Cool, merci beaucoup. Thank you very much for having me and appreciate all the hard. Just bear with me if I read the statement, I'll be happy to answer questions later. Okay, Canada's, Canada's recent immigration turn was perhaps the most, the single worst policy error in Canadian history. It was sold as an all-purpose growth strategy, but by tripling population growth via immigration of mostly younger, low-skill, low-wage people, this has had significant second-order impacts that have wide-ranging negative impacts on housing, healthcare, productivity growth, and of course, youth unemployment. According to the Bank of Canada's 2025 staff paper by Charlemagne Long, Poulet, and Moore, the policy design quietly shifted labor market risk onto the youngest workers, deepening wage pressures by extension, worsening youth unemployment, and disenfranchising Canada's working class. The pivotal, the pivot is compositional. Since 2025, a dramatic, and dramatically in 2023 and 2024, non-permanent residents replaced permanent residents as the main driver of population growth, fueled by international mobility program permits and a surge in steady performance. In the Labor Force survey of microdata that was referred to in this paper, NPR workers have become markedly younger and less experienced, and the share of NPRs who are students hit 16.4% in 2023, 2024, and the average potential experience fell to 11.5%. At the same time, their footprint shifted towards lower productivity service sector jobs, exactly the rungs young Canadians traditionally climb first. There was a price effect. Average nominal wage between NPRs and Canadian board workers more than doubled from 9.5% in 2006 to 14 to 22 point, so negative 22.6% in 2023, 24. And the authors of that paper, which I cite, talk about the widening gap is almost entirely explained by observable traits, less experience, different industries. who are overrepresented in low-wage and part-time industries. When older and mid-career workers take on secondary employment, the number of available part-time and entry-level opportunities for youth declines even further. These structural pressures are converging to create a cycle where young people are shot out of meaningful first jobs, newcomers are underemployed, and experienced workers are unable to retire. To break that cycle, we need a holistic approach, one that looks beyond job creation and focuses on career progression, equity, and retention across the workforce. At Build a Dream, our work is focused on building pathways that don’t stop at career exploration. They lead to long-term success. We work with employers through initiatives like our Trade Skills Incubator and Career Discovery Expos. We help youth, especially young women, explore high-demand careers in sectors such as construction, manufacturing, and technology. But exploration is just the first step. To ensure that interest translates into sustainable employment, our workforce initiative network and career support services provide ongoing mentorship, upskilling opportunities, and wraparound supports. Together, these programs not only help young people enter the workforce, they ensure their retention, advancement, and long-term success, addressing the bottlenecks we’re seeing in entry-level positions across Canada. As part of the solution, I would recommend, one, supporting intergenerational knowledge transfers in sectors like the skilled trades, ensuring mid-level workers and qualified immigrants are trained and ready to step into leadership roles. Two, investing in credential recognition and upskilling programs to ensure immigrants can contribute fully to their fields and open entry-level roles for entry-level workers such as youth. And three, developing targeted incentives and mentorship initiatives to support women and underrepresented youth in transitioning into higher-paying, secure careers. The youth unemployment challenge, it’s not just, it is not just about economics. It’s about fairness and future opportunity. If we don’t act now, we risk losing a generation of talent that Canada’s workforce urgently needs. Thank you for your time and commitment to this issue. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Krieger. Now, Mr. Abassi, Mr. Abassi, for five minutes, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Abdul Abassi. I’m here on behalf of Canadian Alliance of Student Association, or CASA for short. We represent more than 410,000 post-secondary students across Canada. I also serve as the Vice President External for the University of Alberta Students Union. Thank you for the opportunity to appear today. This committee has heard from a range of stakeholders on the rise in youth unemployment, and I would like to highlight how this crisis is particularly affecting post-secondary students. This past summer, we saw the highest unemployment rate for students since 1999, excluding the COVID years. While the long-term benefits of post-secondary education remain clear, we’re increasingly concerned about the short-term employment challenges students face. Post-secondary graduates experienced low unemployment in their prime working years, with 25 to 29 years old unemployment being approximately 40% lower for college and university graduates than those with a high school diploma. But we are finding that it is work during study and immediately after graduation is what students are struggling with the most. The unemployment rate for 15 to 24 years old is roughly twice as much as core age employment. Our focus is on identifying targeted measures to support this vulnerable group at a critical point in their educational and professional journeys. Other witnesses before this committee have highlighted a skills mismatch. We believe that it is less that the wrong skills are being taught, but rather that employers expect a more complete skill set, including having workplace experience. From what we have heard, and ask any students, and they will tell you that entry-level positions frequently require prior experience, making it increasingly difficult to get a foot in the door. CASA understands the position that employers are in. We think a large factor of this year’s rise in youth unemployment is due to a rise in business uncertainty, linked largely with geopolitical risk. For many businesses, short-term positions are the easiest to eliminate in terms of economic uncertainty, especially when training investments made during a two- or four-month summer job or co-op position won’t remain at a company. But these short-term hires are essential for building the skills that employers expect for early-career workers. When these opportunities are limited, it not only affects individual career trajectories, but also poses a risk to Canada’s long-term economic competitiveness. It is generally understood that employers will underinvest in training relative to the economic optimum. CASA believes that to address the student unemployment crisis, work-integrated learning is critical, and getting students entry-level experience is something that will require economic incentive to reduce employers’ perceived risk. The current government and its platform committed to provide funding for youth employment programs, including the Student Workplacement Program, or SWEP, which we know is an excellent tool to promote high-quality work-integrated learning placement and has added flexibility to provide opportunities outside of just, outside of just the summer. In fact, a valuation of SWEP in 2022 found 95% satisfaction with the program for both students and employers. While the program in 2023, 24 was supporting about 60,000 young students annually, it has shrunk to 40,000 this year, which does not help in addressing the unemployment crisis. We therefore would like to see longer-term commitments to funding for 60,000 positions, and we believe greater predictability in funding will be welcomed by businesses that rely on the program to support talent development and workforce planning. Work-integrated learning is a chance to improve educational quality and workforce preparedness. Students are gaining skill that will increase their future employability and are also earning while they learn. Employment helps students afford essentials like tuition and rent. Around a quarter of students struggle to pay rent, and half say they skip meals to make ends meet. Providing students with paying positions is one way to reduce this hardship. An assessment of SWEP participants by the Information and Communication Technology Council in 2023 found that students received significantly more in income than their next best employment option, and employers’ gain net value from the program despite their required wage contribution to the student. This is just one of the tools we see at government disposal to build a higher-scale and productive workforce, but it is an important one. We look forward to a wider-ranging discussion and your question. Thank you.
Mr. Abassi, we will now begin the first questioning with Mr. Janus. No, there’s only one speaking. Mr. Janus for six minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to all the witnesses, a very revealing testimony today. Mr. Diaz, you spoke about how liberal immigration policy has been way out of whack with Canada’s economic interests. You spoke about levels being too high, but also about the mix. You’ve informed us about how the, the mix has, has tilted towards those coming into entry-level positions, and that has had a, had had particular effects exacerbating economic divisions and inequality in our country. That is, having an immigration system that skews towards people taking entry-level positions has been to the advantage of the wealthy, and it’s particularly hurt the young and the working class. I wonder if you could share a bit more about how the, the choices in terms of the mix and the particular immigration programs have impacted young people and the working class in particular? And then also, if you can share more about the solutions, what we should be doing now in light of what has happened the last 10 years, and particularly the last, the last five, what we should do now to put our immigration system on better footing?
Yeah, so, I mean, you said it’s against, you know, it’s been against economic interests. I don’t think that that’s quite true. I think many people have benefited from this immigration. In my view, genuinely, I honest to goodness believe it is the single worst policy error ever. Between 1980 and 2015, total population growth in Canada was 319,000, and the last three years running consecutively were about 900,000, the vast majority of which are immigrants and the vast majority of which are young and low-skilled and low-wage immigrants. When we look at the youth unemployment rate, that’s where it begins and ends. And I, and no other people who have come to this committee who were warned about this in 2014 and 2015, who were then, you know, ignored, obviously, basically said that this exact thing would happen. And I would suggest that the committee members go back and listen to those speeches and those committee submissions. It’s just, it’s simple as supply and demand. And if you import lots of young and desperate people, it will displace the young and desperate people in the current, that are incumbent to this economy. And the other thing I think is really important that we often forget about is that it doesn’t force businesses to adjust and invest in the workers that are here. And so, you know, I was listening to the previous statements, and they said, you know, people, you know, we need to improve training and we need to encourage businesses to support the training and education and retention of young people. Well, nothing does that better than having a significant contraction in supply, which is what we were entering into in 2014 and 2015. And for the exact reasons those corporations were complaining about not having, having too many vacancies, well, the attitude from the government was, should have been, tough luck, do something about it. And those companies would have been, been forced to do all of the suggestions that I’ve heard, those really well-respected and I think well, well-said, well-spoken contributors just a half an hour ago, which is, you know, talking about training and retention and, and providing pathways to secure long-term roles and stuff. Going forward, I think we need to basically end all of those programs and allow the market to clear. And unfortunately, there’s really no fix. And anyone who tells you otherwise, I think, is really, is sort of lying. It will take a long time, many years for this to unwind.
Thank you, and I’d like to share the balance of my time with Ms. Kabina.
My question is for Mr. Diaz as well. So economists often speak about intergenerational equity. Would you agree that today’s high deficits and debt represent a form of intergenerational burden, where younger workers and families were left to pay for yesterday’s overspending?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I don’t believe in intergenera, I don’t like the word equity, but, but I do think that there, when I tell you, when I say that, you know, there was a transfer of wealth from the young and a particularly working class, because we often forget about that. It’s not just youth unemployment. It’s the unemployment or discouraged workers from people who are less educated, who would have also been competing against those, those low-wage, low-skilled immigrants. You know, by, in a scenario where you don’t have that labor market supply, the demand being, if it’s consistent, would have pulled up and pushed up wages. And so what that would have done is it would have, it was, it would have basically, it would have gotten rid of, to some, some degree, certainly at the margin, inequality, right? You have, you would have been high labor demand at the low-skill, low-wage position, which is largely the working class and young people. So you would have a much higher wage growth at that part. And unfortunately, the opposite. And then obviously, if you’re low-wage and low-skill and you’re a working class, you’re off, you’re spending more and more money, more of your income on rent. And of course, what do international students do and what do, like, low-wage and low-immigration people do? They rent. And what do old, rich people do? They buy. And so, you know, it was literally like the worst possible way to improve your labor market. Because it, instead of being sort of progressive, which is what I think most policies should be, it was actually regressive. It was a transfer of wealth from young and working class to old, wealthy and corporations.
Thank you for that.
We’ll now move to Mr. Roche for six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I see that we didn’t stay too long on the topic of youth unemployment, and we quickly veered to the topic of immigration. I find it quite appalling that this forum is being used to express these kinds of views, these kinds of anti-immigrant views when our country was built on immigrants. I would just like to remind our previous panel, we talked about the root of youth employment, which is really what we’re trying to do here in this, with this study, is try to better understand what’s at the root of youth unemployment and how, if any, some of the programs we have are supporting I wonder if you could share a bit more about how the choices in terms of the mix and the particular immigration programmes have impacted young people and the working class in particular? And then also, if you can share more about the solutions, what we should be doing now in light of what has happened the last 10 years, and particularly the last five, what we should do now to put our immigration system on better footing?
Yeah, so, I mean, you said it's against, you know, it's been against economic interests. I don't think that that's quite true. I think many people have benefited from this immigration. In my view, genuinely, I honest to goodness believe it is the single worst policy error ever. Between 1980 and 2015, total population growth in Canada was 319,000, and the last three years running consecutively were about 900,000, the vast majority of which are immigrants and the vast majority of which are young and low-skilled and low-wage immigrants. When we look at the youth unemployment rate, that's where it begins and ends. And I know other people who have come to this committee who were warned about this in 2014 and 2015, who were then, you know, ignored, obviously, basically said that this exact thing would happen. And I would suggest that the committee members go back and listen to those speeches and those committee submissions. It's just, it's simple as supply and demand. And if you import lots of young and desperate people, it will displace the young and desperate people that are incumbent to this economy. And the other thing I think is really important that we often forget about is that it doesn't force businesses to adjust and invest in the workers that are here. And so, you know, I was listening to the previous statements, and they said, you know, we need to improve training and we need to encourage businesses to support the training and education and retention of young people. Well, nothing does that better than having a significant contraction in supply, which is what we were entering into in 2014 and 2015. And for the exact reasons those corporations were complaining about not having too many vacancies, well, the attitude from the government should have been, tough luck, do something about it. And those companies would have been forced to do all of the suggestions that I've heard, those really well-respected and, I think, well-spoken contributors just a half an hour ago, which is, you know, talking about training and retention and providing pathways to secure long-term roles and stuff. Going forward, I think we need to basically end all of those programmes and allow the market to clear. And unfortunately, there's really no fix. And anyone who tells you otherwise, I think, is really, is sort of lying. It will take a long time, many years, for this to unwind.
Thank you, and I'd like to share the balance of my time with Ms. Kabina.
My question is for Mr. Diaz as well. So economists often speak about intergenerational equity. Would you agree that today's high deficits and debt represent a form of intergenerational burden, where younger workers and families were left to pay for yesterday's overspending?
Yeah, I mean, I don't believe in intergenera-- I don't like the word equity, but I do think that there, when I tell you, when I say that, you know, there was a transfer of wealth from the young and a particularly working class, because we often forget about that. It's not just youth unemployment. It's the unemployment or discouraged workers from people who are less educated, who would have also been competing against those low-wage, low-skilled immigrants. You know, in a scenario where you don't have that labour market supply, the demand, if it's consistent, would have pulled up and pushed up wages. And so what that would have done is, it would have, it would have basically, it would have gotten rid of, to some degree, certainly at the margin, inequality, right? You have, you would have been high labour demand at the low-skill, low-wage position, which is largely the working class and young people, so you would have a much higher wage growth at that part. And unfortunately, the opposite. And then, obviously, if you're low-wage and low-skill and you're a working class, you're spending more and more money, more of your income on rent. And of course, what do international students do, and what do, like, low-wage and low-immigration people do? They rent. And what do old, rich people do? They buy. And so, you know, it was literally like the worst possible way to improve your labour market, because instead of being sort of progressive, which is what I think most policies should be, it was actually regressive. It was a transfer of wealth from young and working class to old, wealthy and corporations.
Thank you for that.
Three seconds.
Thank you.
We'll now move to Mr. De Roche for six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I see that we didn't stay too long on the topic of youth unemployment, and we quickly veered to the topic of immigration. I find it quite appalling that this form is being used to express these kinds of views, these kinds of anti-immigrant views, when our country was built on immigrants. I would just like to remind our previous panel, we talked about the root of youth employment, which is really what we're trying to do here in this, with this study, is try to better understand what's at the root of youth unemployment and how, if any, some of the programmes we have are supporting youth gaining meaningful employment, and what we could do better and what we could change. So I think I'd like to focus my time on that. I do invite members to, I will leave it at that. So I'm very, congratulations, first of all, to our witnesses here in the room. Thank you for taking your time, thanking you for putting your thoughts together and sharing this with us. So you talked about the importance of integrated work learning, like, learning on-site. Could you expand a little bit on what, out of the programmes, the federally-supported programmes that are currently supporting this, what works well, what we should try to preserve? And maybe we can start with Mr. Abbassi, and then we can move to the other witnesses? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I think something that previous witnesses have also touched on and we have seen working well is the Student Work Placement Programme. Because of a recent talent shortage service, 77% of Canadian companies struggle to find qualified workers, and that is essentially what student work placement programmes help address, whether it is making sure that, again, companies like biotechs are helping in training those students so that when they go to workforce, they have those skills. And I think there is need for funding into that and going from 40,000 to 60,000, especially considering the youth unemployment we're in.
Thank you. Ms. Krieger.
Thank you for the question. I think it's an excellent one to really focus and highlight on what's been working, and something we at Build Dream have really found is that our investment into our, you know, retention and advancement kind of has alleviated a little bit of what I was speaking about, of how that kind of mid-level worker is what's really kind of pushing. We've got on the heavy end of things, you know, on the retirement side of things, there's, you know, a lot of individuals, especially if you're working for a small and median-sized business. I can't even begin to describe how many times I worked with employers who were under 20 people, and, you know, there's an employee who's highly skilled, highly trained, who's actually unable to retire because they are the only person who holds that knowledge. So you've got that person on one end, and then you've got these young, eager high school students on the other end, right? And the issue is, is because nobody's supporting these young, eager students, youth, et cetera, through that mid-level phase and transitioning into that leadership pipeline, because of that, the, you know, more senior, you know, close to retirement-age workers are actually unable to leave. They want to enjoy retirement more often than not, and because they can't, you know, rely on the youth and the students to just, you know, within three months, pick up all of the skills and knowledge that took 20 years to build, we're seeing that big gap there. So definitely more investments into the retention supports and the advancement supports to help ensure that the youth and just anybody really in these, you know, more entry-level jobs, to ensure that those individuals are able to progress through into the mid-level careers without leaving the industry entirely.
Thank you. And I don't know if, Ms. Schuman, you want to add anything on this?
No, I think.
Okay. Just going back to Mr. Abbassi, so how much do you think, like, so students graduating, I know we have said a lot of programmes, like, whether it's FSWEP or co-op programmes, those are programmes that help students while they're studying get, you know, meaningful experience. Do you, in your view and your engagement with all of your students nationally, does that help them continue that employment afterwards? And do they fare better in finding a job afterward because of those experiences?
Again, thank you so much for the questions. Again, as you have mentioned, work-integrated learning is something that is really important and prepares students for the workforce that they will be going into, and that is something that we have heard, is that if they have those work-integrated learning skills beforehand and if they have those experiences, it really helps them to, again, keep that job or have jobs afterwards. And coming back to SWEP a bit, is that only about quarter of the employers that hired students through SWEP said they would have hired otherwise, so that also means that 75% of the jobs that were created would have never been created. And with the student population increasing, with the youth unemployment increasing, I think there's need for more opportunities like that. So when, again, students have those co-op opportunities and internship opportunities, and the expectation that employers have right now from students is after you graduate, you need to have a year or some experience in the job market, in your field, when you're getting entry-level jobs. So it's getting really hard, and this co-op internship opportunities really helps bridge that gap so students can have those jobs.
Thank you. Six seconds, okay. Well, I'm just curious, I'll just ask my question, and maybe you can write about, I'm just curious, since you're all young, and we talk about the mismatch between what young people are learning and what the employment, what the labour market needs, if you can send us anything on that, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Madame De Roche. Madame Gil for six minutes.
Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Thank you, Chair. So I would like to thank the witnesses who are here with us today, and I wanted to say that it's good, in the study, to hear from young people as well, just through what you do. In a professional way, you have an experience, but also in a less formal way, because you are next to young people. So I have many questions, I may not have time to ask all my questions, but you could also answer in writing. So what are the causes of unemployment for young people? I've heard about the expectations of businesses, so various causes. And Ms. Krieger, also, if you could ask, answer that in terms of women. And also, can this unemployment be problematic for the studies of the young people? So I'll start in French, and then. Last month, we carried out studies through Canada, we spoke with students throughout the country, and the main problem that was mentioned, as Abdullah said, is that the students apply for jobs, but they're being asked for one or two years of experience. And work-integrated learning usually helps people to acquire that experience and develop the confidence to be able to start a job. So most of the students said that that prevents them from earning income and also having the skills to enter the labour market after graduation. So that's what the students we talked to said was their main concern. Ms. Krieger?
So personally, I want to make it very clear that the young people want to work. The young people are the most determined and resilient individuals that I have, you know, kind of worked with in the last little bit here. The issue and kind of that disconnect comes when they are put into positions where they are ill-equipped to navigate, to handle, to manage. A great example of this is, here in Ontario, we have our O耶AP programme, Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Programme. And many, many times when I was on job sites, we would have an O耶AP student there. I think it's a great opportunity, similar to, you know, kind of the work-integrated learning, you know, we've been on the topic of. And with an O耶AP student, there are extra precautions that employers need to take in order to ensure that student's safe and, you know, able to get the best of that experience. And I think a lot of it comes down to, is that gap. You know, it's great to put that student there, but if we can't support them there, I guess that investment is being lost. So we see that, you know, in student placements, but we also see that in other programmes as well. So I think the biggest thing is the inability to retain individuals there. We can get them there, and that's great. They're resilient, they want to work, they will often, you know, work much further, much past, you know, what they wanted to, or the point where they wanted to leave the industry just to, you know, stick it out. But because there is a lack of those wraparound supports that truly support them in thriving their environment, that's more often than not what it comes down to. Thank you.
Merci beaucoup.
Thank you very much. And yes, I have a 20-year-old son and an 18-year-old daughter who want to work even while they're studying. But I have many other questions. I know, I talked about unemployment, does that endanger the studies? These students don't always come from families where we can be, everything can be paid for that. Sometimes we come from remote regions, and that requires sacrifices, I know what I'm talking about, and that there's no, the fact that there's no social net could be difficult because of the cost of university studies and housing. Thank you for the question. I think that there's much being said about the fact that students who want to work during their studies, only want to work to have money, or they don't really want to be studying. But I think we have to speak of that differently. It's a way for them to have money. Some people cannot support themselves financially, or their parents can't do that. That's why work-integrated learning, I don't know how to say that in French, will help students to acquire those skills, but also have a little money so that they can support themselves as well. So you're on point, saying that we have to get away from saying that students only go to school to work and not to study. We carried out a study with working-age Canadians over the summer, and 73% of them said that their studies helped them acquire the skills to continue to work. So we just have to change our way of speaking and to say that working when one's studying is not just a luxury, it's a necessity, and it's also good to get experience. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the witnesses for being here. I'm going to start out, Mr. Abbassi, it's wonderful to have a University of Alberta student, and especially one that came from Augusta on the campus. I went to the campus Saint Jean, so someone from one of the campuses is always wonderful to see. It was reported back in March that the University of Alberta's food bank had a 600% increase over the last five years. Do you think the youth employment crisis is one of the reasons why that food bank saw such a high increase?
Thank you so much for the question. Obviously, we do see your graduates and campus head job grads. I think, as mentioned before, is that students are doing work-integrated learning to get a lot of those skills, but at the same time, they're earning while they learn. So a lot of times, if they don't have any other sports, if they don't have parents to support them, this is where they are earning some money that can help them to pay for their groceries, that can help them to keep a roof of their head, that can also help them to make sure that they have enough time to put towards their study. We have heard from many students that have been doing two-part-time jobs to make ends meet, and that means they don't have time to study, that affects their grade, they don't get scholarship, and then, and they have to work more to make the end meet, so it's a circle.
So the cost of living crisis is having a massive impact on student wellbeing overall?
Yeah, we have been hearing from students that it has been becoming hard to afford education, and it's important education remains a right instead of privilege.
Thank you. So, and now I'm going to switch to Ms. Krieger. It's awesome to see a kickbut tradesperson sitting there, especially a female. I'm the proud daughter of two tradespeople, and they taught me that that's something that you don't step in the way from. So just simply, do you believe that skilled trades are talked about enough in general?
Thank you so much for that question, because I think it's something that I often grapple with. Sometimes I feel like they're talked about, but oftentimes sugar-coated, and, you know, the kind of harsh realities in the current state of them are kind of veered away from. And I truly believe that that boils down to a lack of actual boots-on-the-ground knowledge. You know, there aren't a lot of individuals who get into the skilled trades, who stay there, who know the environment inside and out, and that are able to kind of, you know, sit at this table and advocate on that. So I believe that they are talked about, but I feel like there's a lot of misconceptions, one of which being the retirement, you know, kind of, oh, there's all these individuals in the skilled trades who are retiring, and that is true, and that is going to, you know, really affect us. However, at this current moment, we're, you know, not seeing the retirement rates that were originally projected, right? So things like that.
So then, I guess, on that piece, I think that's a critical part of this, so do you think that we have enough, like, RAP programmes and registered apprenticeship programmes to be able to get young people into the trades? Like, I grew up in Fort McMurray. We have had RAP programmes since, like, before I was born. It shocks me when I find out that that's not really common. But even in Fort McMurray, we're like, we're a trades town. We are a super-duper trades town, probably not dissimilar to Windsor. It still was, if you're smart, you should go to university, not go into the trades. What would you say to a young, smart woman today?
I often say that smart people need to build buildings. That is a pretty point-blank statement there. But to your point about how, you know, we've always had these apprenticeship programmes, we have apprenticeship registration programmes, we have individuals entering this industry. However, bringing it back to the retention and advancement piece, that's where we're lacking. We can have recruitment all we want, but if we are not going to protect that investment by, you know, investing into the retention and advancement of these individuals, we are going to consistently keep seeing this revolving door where we are losing money. So I have a couple of stats here to kind of speak on that, where only 30% of women who begin apprenticeship programmes complete them, in comparison to 45% of men. 45% of men do not complete an apprenticeship programme. This is not just speaking about underrepresented groups, this is speaking about all apprentices all across the board. And so, you know, when we talk about, you know, again, to that point of, we talk about skilled trades, people are interested, people are excited to go into the skilled trades. Personally, I was excited to go into the skilled trades. Growing up in Windsor, I drove down Riverside Drive where all the nice houses were, and I knew that all of those houses belonged to tradespeople. And so it was an idealized career for me. But once I got into it, it was not the shiny glamour that I had originally been promised.
Yeah, it's a lot of hard work, and I know my parents were really proud. They all had apprentices. They both had apprentices regularly, and they would highlight their apprentices and really do that mentorship. And so I really want to thank you for highlighting the lack of mentorship that sometimes exists in that space.
Thank you. Yeah.
Five point seven, thank you, Ms. Goodrich, good questioning. Monsieur Joseph for six minutes.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Felicitations.
Thank you, Chair. Congratulations to our witnesses. Thank you for being here. It's always a pleasure to meet you here in Ottawa, at the centre of our democracy. So the message really is to, you're saying, is to not let yourself be intimidated. From your experience, Mr. Abdul, what are the initiatives and support from the government which have truly made a positive difference in the journeys of students to jobs? And how can we even better help young people to go from between work and studies?
I think when we are talking about some of the things that have worked, is, and I have touched on this as well, is the Student Work Placement Programme that we have seen work out for students, and we have seen, again, the number has shrunk from 60,000 in 2022 to 23 to 40,000 for now, but that is something that we have seen working. It's important that we have more funding into this. And to touch on more stuff that the government can do to help students out, and to touch a bit on apprentices, we do take a holistic view of education and training, and something that CASA is pushing for is that with the federal government focus on major projects, infrastructure, that we establish, the government establishes that 10% of the apprenticeships that are being worked on those projects, on infrastructure, on major projects, and on housing, are being worked by apprentices, because, and this is something that we have seen in provinces like Alberta and across some other provinces in the country, and something that we have seen is that in US between 2012 and 2022, the apprentices' number went up by 64%, but in Alberta, it decreased by 4.8%. So how do we find those apprentice trainers that can help students through their journey, even their journey, through their journey to get those skills and do that? So these are student work placement programme and apprentices' orders are two aspects that I would say government can help in.
Okay, Monsieur le Président, j'ai une question.
Chair, I have a question for... Mr. Abdul was talking about Alberta and our province. Mr. Abdul was talking about Alberta and our province. What role does the provincial government play to complement federal initiatives on student employment? So, I think the solution is to support the students. I think that all the witnesses have asked themselves, are we preparing students to enter the job market? But the problem is that they're not yet in the door. The students, there are 20, 30, 40 job applications, they get no responses because employers want experience before they can start working. So, they don't even have a chance to get through the door to acquire skills. So, what we're asking the government is that we need to have more opportunities. As Abdul said, we had the SWIP program went from 60,000 to 40,000, so there are 20,000 jobs less for these students. So, the government should have more of a long-time commitment to work-integrated learning to support students throughout the country and provinces. Thank you, Chair. It's good. And I could give my two minutes to Caroline.
The time, yeah. I have a quick question for Ms. Krueger, and I wanted to mention, we talked earlier in our introduction about vulnerability, and how, you know, you have your 75%, they have the supported parents, they have the background, they have the money and the support system. But what about the 25% of students that come from vulnerable demographics? If you could expand on that, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this a little bit further. It boils down to resiliency. That's the number-one word there. And nobody is more vulnerable, or nobody is more resilient than students and individuals, youth, young people, whether it's, you know, individuals with disabilities or, you know, racialized communities, nobody is going to be more resilient in a workforce than a vulnerable community. And that's why they're such a key aspect, you know, when we look at jobs like apprenticeships, you know, speaking to, you know, a structure that currently doesn't have a lot of those supports. I often say, nobody's going to work harder in an apprenticeship than a single mom trying to provide for her kids, right? And so, that's why we really need to, when we invest in the apprenticeship structure, we need to have a focus on equity priority groups and these vulnerable communities to ensure that they are set up for success, because at the end of the day, when we speak to employers and we ask employers what they need from qualified workers, from skilled workers, they need resilience, they need the ability to, you know, pivot quickly to keep up with an ever-changing workforce and things like that. So, at the end of the day, I think that's a huge point, and thank you so much for raising it.
Thank you. Madame Gill, for two minutes.
Madame Gill, for two and a half minutes. Thank you, Chair. We learned from witnesses from the National Committee of the Unemployed that the government had cut 2,000 jobs in the public service, jobs that were specially meant for students. So, is there a way for, that the government can support students where we've seen an increase of unemployment in young people? Thank you for the question. And I think that you've pointed out something very important, and usually we saw decrease in opportunities for students, and we can see an increase of student unemployment. So, we think that in order to have, we need to have more opportunities for students, because everyone wants to work. Students want experience, they want money. I think that the government should look at options in work-integrated learning or the Canada Summer Job Program to see how we can expand programs that already exist to offer more opportunities, to give more support to students. For example, as you said, the student summer experience, which would mean that youngs couldn't get a job. And you, Ms. Krieger, what would you say?
Question. I would definitely say that one of the things that we're seeing a lot of is a lot of heavy funding and the recruitment and awareness side of things, but, you know, kind of sounding like a broken record here, you know, the lack of supports, you know, when it comes to those retention and advancement pieces. You know, looking at, you know, one of these stats from Bild Force, women accounted for just 4.8% of construction trade apprenticeships nationally, but only about 2% completed their apprenticeship in construction sectors. That speaks volumes to how many individuals who get into the, you know, kind of trades and, you know, the recruitment and the awareness investments, those are working. But it needs to be supplemented with that long-term holistic, you know, kind of approach that wraparound supports and holistic-based programs can provide.
And maybe it's less, it's happening less in your field of specialization, but briefly, this hiatus between the end of studies and the time when we want to work and where workers want to have, it's not unqualified, qualified workers, but it's the problem with experience. Is this a tendency that's happening everywhere? You can't expect someone who's just coming into the workforce to have worked for two years, does that prolong your training and make young people poorer? And is there this idea that employers should also be supporting young workers? So, I know it's three questions, but I'll let you answer.
We're going to end with two five-minute rounds, right on the five minutes. Where are we going? Mr. Genus?
Thank you, Chair. I think I need to start by responding to what Ms. Derochier said. We have a globally-recognized economic and investment expert here who's given us an economic and data-driven critique of bad liberal immigration policy because of its impact on youth unemployment. This Liberal MP has characterized that expert reflection as being, quote, "anti-immigrant." She did not engage with the data Mr. Diaz presented, and she didn't even give him a chance to respond during her round of questioning. And I think it's important for people to notice that this is precisely the way that Liberals have tried to shut down substantive debate about immigration. All of us recognize that this country has benefited from immigration, and we also recognize that we need to have thoughtful conversations about the particular policy mix, and whether or not the policies of the government are working or not in this regard, and how they are impacting our country. This is a necessary policy conversation about holding the government accountable for government decision-making. So, for Liberal MPs to dismiss disagreement with their bad policies and expert analysis based on data, exposing the failures of their policy, for Liberals to dismiss this as anti-immigrant is a political tactic aimed at covering for their own failures and the impact that those failures have had on working-class people and young people. Those are my comments on it. But, Mr. Diaz, I want to give you the courtesy that Ms. Derochier did not give you and allow you to respond to some of her slanders against your testimony, and particularly if you want to offer further support for your position, I'll give you the time to do that now.
Thank you. I just want to be very clear, I am not anti-immigrant, because I can't be anti-my mom, and I sure as heck can't be anti-my dad either. I'm extremely, extremely proud immigrant, the child of immigrants. I grew up in a country that offered my parents the opportunities that they would never have been afforded to in their countries, and they're extremely proud Canadians, and I would never, ever shy away from that. But we were, I was asked to discuss the root of the youth unemployment, and whether you look at the Bank of Canada's paper, and I would submit to you that the Bank of Canada is not politically charged, it's, we can agree it's an independent source, whether you look at the Labor Force Survey of July, where it discusses the increase in youth unemployment, the issue is that we flooded a labor market. And what I mean by flooded is I mean that from 2000, population growth, the population of people aged from 15 to 24 in 2021 was about 4.38 million people. It is now at 5.0, so 5 million on the button. That's 600,000 new people in that age cohort. In that same timeframe, I'm looking at the data right in front of me from Labor Force Survey of Statistics Canada, there was, in 2022, there was 2.5 million jobs for that age, same age cohort, and now there are 2.7 million jobs. So, you know, we can, you know, dink and dither about whether it's polite to say this or that. The reality is, is the reason youth unemployment is so high, the highest it's been ex-COVID since 1977, is because of a poorly thought-out immigration policy that directly affected. And just one more point, there was people saying, you know, that one of the problems that the other two witnesses said is that people are, businesses are always asking for experience, asking for experience. That credentialism is exactly what the Bank of Canada cited as one of the issues with flooding a labor market with low-skilled, low-wage workers.
Thank you. I note that Ms. Krieger also had some comments about the immigration system, and you spoke as well about the importance of credential recognition, how when there's a failure of credential recognition, you have newcomers who could be in a higher-skilled area that are actually in a position where they're competing with young people in entry-level positions. I want to give you 30 seconds that I have left to share anything else you want to add on the immigration issue specifically.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. And, you know, kind of to echo what Mr. Diaz had spoken to, it's a situation where, you know, nobody really wins, right? If we're not able to support immigrants who are coming to Canada to work in high-skilled, high, you know, highly-educated positions, it's doing a disservice to them, and it's doing a disservice to us. And honestly, the only people who are winning here are big corporations and big employers who are benefiting from, you know, paying them lower wages and things like that. So, yeah.
Right on, thank you.
Mrs. Fancy, for five minutes.
Five minutes. Thank you very much, Chair. I'd like to begin my five minutes first by saying, we have to remember what committee we are actually on right now. We are the Human Resources, Skills, and Social Development and Status of Persons with Disabilities. This is not an immigration committee.
Point of order.
Although, although, it is a factor into some of the workings that we're dealing with.
What is your point of order? Clearly state your point of order.
My point of order is, this is devolving into a...
This is not a point of order. Mrs. Fancy, you have the floor.
My colleague from across the way, I was saying that this is not the immigration committee. However, there is a piece of the pie to play in regards to immigration. Another larger societal piece that I'd like to talk about was something that Ms. Krueger had mentioned earlier in regards to, we have one of a generational larger population, some of the younger people today, and I also want to say thank you so much to actually have the youth here for a youth study, had mentioned, Ms. Krueger, earlier about the Boomers, let's say, and how this larger demographic of people who would have typically retired are staying longer with on the job. And you had mentioned about successional planning, or lack thereof. So, I wanted to give you some opportunity today to talk about this much, much larger piece of the pie. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I think it really does come down to a lot of moving pieces and moving parts, right? You know, we're looking at, you know, the youth, and it seems kind of counterintuitive to look at, you know, mid-career and, you know, end-of-career kind of individuals, but there are so many moving pieces that you really do have to factor everything in here. So, you know, speaking to kind of the Boomer population, we've all seen the forecasts that say that, you know, X amount of the skilled trades workplace is, you know, they belong to that baby boomer generation, and they will be exiting. And that's what was forecasted, but that's not what was happening due to a lack of succession planning. One of the main barriers with succession planning, kind of what I've spoken to before, is this lack of this mid-level population that's, you know, kind of in, you know, whether it's, you know, Gen X or the millennial generation, a lot of them are leaving the workplace. So, that's, you know, due to, you know, whether it's violence and harassment, whether it's due to a lack of support, things like that. That's also kind of, you know, bringing in the immigration piece, when, you know, highly-skilled immigrants, workers come in and are unable to get their credentials recognized, they would be entering at that mid-level, which is where we need them. And so, my point where, you know, it's a disservice to us, and it's a disservice to them to not recognize the credentials and put them in that mid-level range so that the Boomers can, you know, do that succession planning. Thank you.
Krueger, and can you also expand on the piece where you discussed about mentorship with an older demographic, with an incoming, younger demographic? Thank you.
I can definitely speak to the skilled trades industry as a whole. Looking at the Boomer demographic that, you know, built the workforce, oftentimes it is predominantly white and predominantly male. And so, part of the issue with this is when we see a younger, more diverse demographic moving into the workplace, there's a lot of resiliency that the younger demographic is facing and showing, and, you know, that braveness of showing up to a place where nobody looks like you. However, they only stay there for so long, and we see that by those retention statistics. Oftentimes, you know, now, companies are holding on to these, you know, more senior-level individuals, and those more senior-level individuals are passing that rhetoric down, and it's essentially just training generation after generation of generation, that you have to, you know, endure violence and harassment on a daily basis to earn your dues, to, you know, expand and excel in the workplace. So, I think that that gap of success, it's very, more or less, zero to 100 really quickly. We're going from a predominantly white, predominantly male workplace, workforce, you know, in the baby boomer generation, which makes up the majority of the skilled trades industry specifically, down to a very, very, very diverse, you know, workforce of youth coming in, and that's caused a lot of issues within. Thanks.
Nice, thank you very much, Krueger and Ms. Krueger. And at the end of this, I also want to highlight a nonprofit organization in Nova Scotia that I was a part of called Techexploration, which their sole mission and vision was to have female skilled trades or STEAM or STEM different positions, having those mentors take on these young girls and fulfill these mentorships with them in a way of, you know, letting them have experiences, especially within those vulnerable demographics. So, thank you all for coming today, it's really appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Fancy. That concludes the second round. Thank you to the witness for appearing here today. Given that we've gone beyond the two hours, the committee will adjourn and reconvene on October 21st. Committees adjourn.